Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country, and thank you to Grand Prairie's own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. That's the second time that we've used that at a city council meeting, and council's still getting used to the pace of the Grand Prairie's Boys Choir. So we'll call our city council meeting to order, and we'll start with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I get an adoption, a motion for that set of minutes? Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the city council meeting, held September 19th, 2011, be adopted.
Thank you very much. Counselor Wong, did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Crokin, could you handle that for us?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented, but please would you add 9.7.1 Ready-Set Dance Lease Agreement?
Okay, thank you very much. So a motion to adopt the agenda with the item added by Counselor Crokin. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the votes. Thank you. That motion carries. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our meeting. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We did have note of two delegations, and the first was no stranger to this chamber, councillor, former councillor Gladys Blackmore from the United Way, and Mr. Don Natchek. Gladys, would you like to come up? It's hard to not look at you and say, "Councillor." Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. We're very happy to be here in front of city council tonight. I want to introduce to council and to the members of the Grand Prairie community our voluntary campaign chair for the 2011 United Way campaign, Mr. Don Natchek, who is, of course, the president of the college and well-known in the community. And Don is going to tell you all about the United Way this evening.
Welcome, Don.
Thank you, your worship councillors. Thanks for taking the time to listen to us today and tonight. We really appreciate that. The United Way was formed about 35 years ago and has had a tremendous impact on this community and many of the communities around us. And the United Way, for a longest time, ran as a volunteer organization, and the complexity of what it does and the sophistication in what it does now requires staffing, and we actually have a campaign cabinet that actually manages the campaign on an annual basis. And one of the fundamentals of that work is that the money raised in the community stays in that community, which is very important so that the citizens actually have a chance to speak towards what is important to them and their region. We have a huge region to be responsible for. Our region expands from Grand Cache to the Northwest Territories border, from the B.C. border to Fox Creek. So you can see that it's a very diverse demographic, as well as an incredible geography to cover. We've been doing some work in Fairview and High Prairie, and we're breaking into those two communities and trying to establish the United Way with a real presence there. And I guess at this point, the best way to say that is that they are simply test projects for us as we evolve, and we hope that at some point that they will have their own initiatives in place. And fundraising is a key part of what we do, and always will be, but there's so much more. In the upcoming year, you're going to see a change, or in the upcoming two years, you're going to see a change in the way that the United Way allocates its funds, allocates its resources. What we're intending to do over time is to deal with an outcomes-based approach, as opposed to outputs-based approach, so that we can better align with the donors and the needs of the community, so that we can actually see incremental change in the funding that we are able to garner for the community and watch the community grow, rather than finding ourselves funding things over and over again. Maybe we can start to make advances. One of the things that's important is that the United Way is also shifting from simply a fiscal driver to actually a support driver. As a matter of fact, there was an entity in the community that was considering closing its doors, and one of our board members, a gentleman by the name of Fletcher Bootle, you probably know Fletcher, went into this entity, helped them out, and was able to garner support both at the provincial and municipal levels to support that. An entity that was providing an essential service is alive today because of the work of this gentleman. So that's part of what United Way does, so it's more than just fundraising. The other thing you're going to see particularly coming up in the spring is the, we're calling it the United Way Days of Caring Program. The United Way believes that the support to the community doesn't necessarily be in the form of dollars. It could be in the support of contributions in terms of labor and actual physical activity. For example, that we're looking at helping in the construction of one of the YMCA daycares, where we can actually bring citizens together, and they can do workbees and all sorts of things to help support community initiatives. So we're taking a more holistic view in terms of supporting our community. Everyone in this room can participate in the United Way, and everyone, I believe, should. I'm a relatively new citizen to Grand Prairie, and I find it remarkable what is going on in this community and what the need is for support in this community. And I tell you, I support United Way now more than I ever did after spending two years on the campaign and learning about the agencies and learning about what's going on up there, and our responsibility as citizens to give back to those that need a helping hand. Two out of three of our citizens will be impacted by the agencies that the United Way supports. So personally, I feel an obligation to contribute and to support that. So you can do that by supporting your employees as they support us and supporting yourselves in your own way. Our goal this year is aggressive. Last year, we had a goal of 825,000. We brought in over 840. We're shooting for a 900,000 goal this year, and we think we can exceed that. How much we exceed that, we can only hope, but we'd like to exceed that. So, your worship, I would humbly submit this report to you.
Well, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate that. Any questions for Don or Gladys? I note that you handed out a United Way package that included a number of items, including a payroll deduction form. Thank you very much for that. I certainly appreciate it. And to recognize the contribution of United Way, we have the, City of Grand Prairie has the opportunity from time to time to proclaim a month in recognition of important community partners and different events, and so I'd like to make a proclamation tonight. Whereas the citizens of Grand Prairie and region receive great benefits from the many programs provided by its human care service agencies, and whereas the United Way of Grand Prairie and region brings together service providers, community organizations, businesses, and dedicated individuals in a united effort to build strong and healthy communities, and whereas the United Way of Grand Prairie and region has, for the past 36 years, made available its financial support from its annual fall giving campaign, and whereas the United Way funds raised in the Grand Prairie region support Grand Prairie and region organizations and partners for the benefit of citizens and the improvement of their quality of life, now therefore I, Bill Given, Mayor of the City of Grand Prairie, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2011 as United Way Month, and encourage all citizens to support financially, through the United Way, the many local community partners which provide invaluable services for seniors, families, and youth in the Grand Prairie and region. And I signed that here tonight. And Gladys, it would be my pleasure, Gladys and Don, my pleasure to present that to you along with my completed payroll deduction form.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, sure.
And this will actually go to Michelle Gardner, who is your Rapid City College Board. Helen still hasn't learned to push her button.
Some things don't change. Counselor Rice?
Learned to recognize it. I know that there are lots of businesses that have promotional events with all the proceeds going to United Way, and they can be from a very small to a very large. So if a business wanted to have something with proceeds going to United Way, who and where would they contact?
They would just call me at the United Way offices, or go online and email us and ask questions, and we will certainly help them put together any kind of promotional package they wanted.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Don't take off yet. I see that there's another person that has some questions about the United Way, which is a little surprising. Counselor Raver, question about United Way?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a comment, not related to the campaigns particularly, but I didn't take note that our premier, our new premier, Premier Redford, did talk on the campaign trail about supporting not-for-profits more, and I'm not sure what forum that will take, but it'll be interesting. I'm sure you'll monitor that and see how that unfolds as we move forward with the new government. Thank you.
We're fortunate to live in Alberta because we're the only province that offers a 50% tax donation on charitable donations over $200. So no other province does that, and it makes it a lot easier to give when you're taking half your money from Box C on your T4 slip.
Thanks very much. Any further questions for the delegation? Counselor Rice, I see your name in the queue. Did you have another question?
No.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
So this is still the delegation portion of our agenda, and an opportunity for anybody to come forward. We did have another delegation that had asked if they could have some time, and Mr. Jarvis with the Wild Rose Party, the Grand Prairie Wapiti constituency. Mr. Jarvis? Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given and council. I just wanted to take a brief opportunity to introduce myself. About a week ago, I was selected as the nominated individual to become the candidate for the Wild Rose Party in the next election in Grand Prairie Wapiti. And as part of my theory going forward and my dedication, it's to make myself available to the councils and to the citizens to hear the questions that you have about our party, about just opportunities going forward, and to relay the information that we have so that I can show we have an open relationship with councils and a dedication. Our main dedication is to get the opportunities and the choices, along with the funding required, back into the council hands, where not only it can be more effective on a community level, but to also offer the citizens a better accountability because the people that are in charge of those funds and those decisions are accessible to them. So just a brief introduction of myself. I've been here five years. I work in the oil patch currently. I'm married with four children, and I'm looking forward to the opportunities to serve this community and the surrounding region. So if there's any questions?
That's perfect. Thanks very much, Ms. Jarvis. Any questions for Ms. Jarvis? I see Counselor McLean in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, Mr. Jarvis, question I had, I'm familiar with policy of admissible funding and bringing it back to the local level. What do they detail? And I kind of want to know about your policy of privatization of healthcare. Those two things.
My understanding at this point is that the privatization of healthcare is on a delivery level, not on a payment level. So we see already across the province that there are many institutions that give private delivery. A lot of the clinics are privately run, to the best of my knowledge. And it's just to expand on that because private delivery has the opportunity and the flexibility to deliver a more efficient product at a more rapid pace. So funding would follow the patient and the necessary procedures, and from there, the province would monitor the payments, and each individual would be able to check in and see what's being charged on their behalf. Really simplifies it to get rid of some of the red tape and the bureaucracy that slows things down and open it up to a community level of delivery.
And there was the second one about municipal policies?
Yes, the municipal policies, it entails the opportunities for councils to take a leading role in the decisions for their communities. Currently, there are about 50 grants, to the best of my understanding, that are applied for, and it takes a lot of time from the councils and a lot of effort, going to Edmonton to petition ministers on behalf of different projects that really should be going ahead without political interference. We see, my own personal example of this that I've seen in this community is the hospital that's been announced four times and is now under some level of construction that's been needed for some time. And council, I'm sure, would have been able to apply the funds if it was in the care of the council to do that much sooner without political pandering to positions that votes were more necessary for the party in charge. So it just, it gets that responsibility back to the councils to do what's best for the community and takes a lot of the provincial politics out of that growth opportunity.
Okay, thanks very much. Any further questions for Ms. Jarvis? Seeing none, thanks very much for coming and introducing. Oh, Counselor Crokin, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Jarvis, could you just tell me, where would a person be able to get ahold of you to find out more on your policies or the general public?
The policies as a whole are available at wildrose.ca. I've got a website under development as well. I can get you a business card afterwards. My current business cards are a week behind because I've just become that individual, so I'm waiting for some updated cards from the campaign trail, but I will get you a business card where you can contact me at any time.
Or maybe all of council, because we get asked.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Looks like there's no further questions. Eyebrow raised, to see if any council members. Doesn't look like there are any further questions. Ms. Jarvis, thanks very much for coming in and introducing yourself tonight. Obviously, the City of Grand Prairie is open to representatives from all political parties. We've met with party leader Danielle Smith when she's been in Grand Prairie. We appreciate that opportunity, and it's good to see people locally getting involved. Thanks very much for presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given and council. Appreciate your time.
So this is still the delegation portion of our agenda, an opportunity for anybody in the community that wanted to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. Looking out into the crowd, I see another community member coming forward. Could you introduce yourself for the, Ms. Crokin?
Hello, my name is Joe Johnson. I'm a city resident and property owner and future flow rider, professional surfer. I have two things tonight that I'd like to say to council. First and foremost, I am so excited about the opening of the multiplex. I'm very grateful to this council and councils of the past, the dedication to that project. The importance of that type of project cannot be underestimated. I won't go on and on, just want to say thanks for that, and I'm really excited about it. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is snow removal, and I know that you guys get beat up on the issue quite a bit, but this is not a complaint, it's rather a praise, which I'm sure you're not so used to. But last winter, as everyone knows, was a pretty brutal winter with a lot of snow, and my household and family, we felt especially cagey, given the weather, and we were absolutely delighted to see how well the trails in Musquesee Park were maintained, the clearing of the snow and the graveling of the icy areas and whatnot. And when we got down in there, we were also very surprised to see how well-used those areas are. Even in the harshest winter possible, there were a lot of people down there enjoying it. And, you know, just around town, you hear a lot of people saying, "Oh, it's a winter city," and trails and sidewalks are under snow for six months a year, so just forget it. And the trails and sidewalks are very, very important. You guys that are, the Musquesee Park operations crew, did a great job of maintaining the trails last year, and I'd like to hope that this council encourages that department and provides them the resources to do that again this winter and then subsequent winters. It was very much appreciated.
Thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Seeing none, thanks very much for taking the opportunity to speak to council. Of course, you're welcome to stay or welcome to go. I have a feeling you may stay. But we do appreciate that, and obviously, any opportunity to come to council and give council members an update on concerns and priorities for the community is a welcome one. So one last call, if there's anybody else out there in the public that wants to come and speak to council on any issue. I was surprised the last time I just asked tonight, and there's somebody popped up. Doesn't look like there's going to be anybody else popping up, so that'll close the delegation portion of our agenda and move on to public hearings. And we have a public hearing on bylaw C110176, the land use bylaw amendment. So I'd call that public hearing to order and ask for an introduction from administration. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Representatives from the school boards have requested that the city amend the land use bylaw. The proposed amendment would require that school site amenities such as sports fields and play areas, common areas, et cetera, be a condition of development permit, much the same way paving of parking lots and landscaping is currently addressed. The school boards have requested this amendment to assist in attaining provincial funding, going along with the idea that it's easier to attain funding from the province for items that are required in a land use bylaw rather than would be desirable. We've been working with the school boards on this amendment. Everyone's in agreement. We advertised the bylaw, and to date, we haven't received any submissions in response to the public notification, and as such, we recommend that city council give bylaw C110176 second and third reading.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Johnson. So an opportunity for questions for administration. Counselor Rice?
Did you have any meetings or make UDI aware of this, Joe?
Ms. Johnson?
No, we did not make UDI aware of this component because this would be, it doesn't really matter if this amendment goes through or not, it doesn't affect UDI. They're not a stakeholder in this issue in the sense that the land's already dedicated and the neighborhood's likely already built out, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Joe, most schools built nowadays, playgrounds aren't included, right? Like Knights of Columbus will do one for Teresa, or Sargent's one there, but Mother Teresa's, sorry, Mother Teresa School. So it's been a big void for years in the province. Playground's never been funded when these hospitals been built. Am I right on that assumption?
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, you're, thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, you're correct on that. The playgrounds are not built, and this amendment will actually not see those playgrounds built either. It was an intentional decision with the school boards to leave the playgrounds out in that they felt that that might be pushing the envelope a little too much in this matter, so the idea was to start with this and see how it goes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Johnson, was the public notified?
Ms. Johnson?
There were advertisements placed in the newspaper?
So are we confident as a community, as a council, that all of the people who want to have an opportunity to have an opinion about this know about it? Everybody, I know I read the paper, but I don't know if everybody, every citizen does.
Ms. Johnson?
We're confident in that we've used whatever public notification is available for that nature of amendment. It's a text amendment only, it doesn't affect a specific property, so letters don't get sent out to adjacent property owners in this instance, like they would of rezoning. So falling short of doing the usual public notification, you just try and identify the stakeholders, and in this instance, we felt that realistically, the stakeholders are the school boards, as they're the ones who would be developing the site and incurring the costs. If it's not funded through a provincial source, then they'd have to try and figure out a way to make these things happen themselves. And so in that sense, we are satisfied that we've identified all the stakeholders and the public's been notified.
Okay, thanks very much. Counselor Rice?
Do we put this on our website, Joe? Under development news or upcoming developments or something?
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, all bylaw amendments are posted on our website.
And Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. When I was looking at this, I read play areas, so I felt that like the playground within the school, so you're saying it's not included. So what would be a play area, sandbox?
Ms. Johnson?
Sorry, I guess that was maybe a bit of an oversight in the report. If you refer to the actual amendment, it states that it's, the entire site must be developed, including but not limited to the construction of sports fields, common areas, landscaping, and parking. So it does not include playgrounds.
Okay, there's the answer. Okay, so an opportunity now for anybody who'd like to speak in favor of the amendment. Call again for anybody that'd like to speak in favor of the amendment. I'm looking out to the public. I don't see anybody coming forward, so an opportunity for anybody that'd like to speak in opposition to the proposal. Again, another opportunity for anybody that'd like to speak in opposition. I see no one, and so I would close the public hearing and we'd move on to business arising, and would look for, I see Counselor Rice in the queue.
I would move second reading of bylaw C1100176 to amend the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So opportunity for discussion and debate on the motion. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I don't know, like, because when I see players, I think of playgrounds at schools, and I know you're just going after soccer or parking, but I don't know what amendments should be made to include that as playgrounds at school sites, or go to keep it right off the list, because why would be play areas? I don't know.
Okay.
Make an amendment.
Okay, so are you moving an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so then that needs to start off with?
Okay.
With?
I'd like to move amendment where it's, they got down here as play areas, but soccer fields and parking lots, but also include playgrounds for school development.
So just for clarity, I think Counselor McLean, we need to refer to the actual bylaw that's in the council agenda package? And the wording there is, as part of the development of a school, the entire site must be developed, including but not limited to the construction of sports fields, common areas, landscaping, and parking. So can you be a little more specific on what you're amending? Would you like to?
I'd like to add, oh, playground structures.
Playground structures.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so the amendment to second reading is in order, and I will, so we'll ask for discussion and debate on the amendment. In my queue, I see vacant. I'm just going to push it and see who's light comes on. Who's light came on when I pushed vacant?
That was me.
Okay. Now, Counselor Rice, you're in here two times. I'm just, I'm going to clear the queue, and anybody that wants to speak to the amendments, please ring in. Okay, so please ring in. Counselor Rice to the amendments.
Oh, yeah.
Just a second. Turn your own microphone there, Counselor Rice.
Okay. I won't be supporting the amendment, and I won't because once the site is landscaped, I believe it would be a reflection of the school board's experience that it's generally easier to get a not-for-profit group to supply the playground. The bylaw also says, "The specific features of each school site shall depend on whether the school is an elementary school or a high school." So I, you know, I would hesitate to support a motion that sees us putting in a playground at a high school.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I think I would pretty much echo Counselor Rice's concerns with this. I think that there's not enough detail in this amended motion to allow us to proceed. It doesn't speak to the size of the playground, it doesn't, it's missing a lot of details. I think that this might be something that could possibly come back in the future.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, thanks very much. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, I guess I have a concern with, um, with the fact that the playground structure itself is usually fairly expensive to put up, and the bylaw would state that they have to have one, but it wouldn't say how they would have to fund one. So if the provincial government were to do what they do now and not fund playground structures, it would be up to the school board to take it right out of their own budget and, and build that playground structure, and that, I think we're putting them in a fairly onerous position. I, I think they all already realize that they want a playground structure and they're gonna find a way to do it. Making it a bylaw requirement really puts that cost directly on their shoulders, uh, prior to everything being developed.
Okay, thanks very much. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I won't be supporting the amendment as well. I, I do think we have to recognize the counsel and advice of our education, school district partners, uh, that are basically telling us, let's go one step at a time, and let's start with playing fields and common areas, and maybe we can move to playgrounds, uh, in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. So any other discussion or debate on the amendments? Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I think what Counselor McLean was getting at, or maybe he can explain that, but I know being a school board trustee for the Catholic School Board for a, a large number of years, we've come a long way from tires hanging and kids swinging off of them. Uh, you know, we have now structures that are, uh, are done by engineering outfits, but they are very, very expensive because of the liability insurance upon the, the builders of these, so, um, to, to put that out, uh, I, I don't know, maybe right now, I, I, we're advocating for, for new schools for the public and the Catholic School Boards. I wouldn't want that to hinder a new school for anybody, seeing that, that the developer would have to put those in. So I'm, that, just for information.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Okay, one last opportunity on the amendment. Anything new? Okay, seeing none, then I'll call the question on the amendment. Thank you. And that motion does not carry, so we'll go back to second reading, um, as originally stated. Uh, so opportunity for discussion and debate on second reading. On second reading of the bylaw, discussion and debate. Seeing nobody ringing in, then we'll, uh, proceed to the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Uh, would somebody care to give a motion for third reading? Counselor Rice?
I move third reading of bylaw C-1100-176 to amend the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and that finishes up our public hearing business, and we would move on to unfinished business of which we have none. Reports, which we have none, and into communi, committee business, and, uh, the special governments, General Government Services Committee meeting from September 19th. Counselor Rice, I believe you headed that one up for us?
I would move that council receive the minutes of the special government, General Government Services Committee meeting of Monday, September 19th.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Rice, was there anything you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
No, this, the, uh, business from that meeting was approved at the last meeting, council meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Okay, so that'll take us to the Public Works Committee meeting for September 20th, and Counselor Wong, I think you had that one?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held September 20th, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Did anyone note any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I move the council approve the revisions to the Snow Removal and Ice Control Policy 606, and in speaking to that, Mayor Given, it was a very long presentation and lots of discussion was had at the committee meeting. Uh, I'm gonna try to summarize as much of the information as possible. Uh, currently, our snow removal is 24 hours a day during the winter, from Sunday to Friday, and the snow removal crews work, uh, in three eight-hour shifts. Uh, on the weekends, they, they focus on ice control at the intersections. Under extreme conditions, within policy 606, they would switch over to a two, to two 12-hour shifts, and that would allow them to minimize the amount of time in transferring from one shift to the other and having to bring all the equipment back to the city service center. Uh, there were several other points that were in the, uh, in the policy. It talked about, uh, winter parking bans and how that would more greatly, uh, increase efficiency, so what they're looking to do this year is, uh, ask for greater enforcement in, in the area of getting, getting the vehicles off the streets because that would definitely increase efficiency. Uh, the committee talked about looking into the possibility of allowing snow removal crew members, uh, to have the ability to write tickets in case, uh, vehicles are there, so they wouldn't have to call a bylaw officer and wait till that bylaw officer shows up. Uh, also in the policy, uh, it discussed, uh, snow removal, uh, or snow storage, uh, that they were gonna try to store as much snow as possible on City Boulevard. Uh, as much as 40% of our snow removal budget can be taken up by snow removal, and it's quite time-consuming, so there, I know a lot of people don't like it, but part of the front of your yard is City Boulevard, and if they can store it there, it'll eliminate the need to windrow and have to come back and collect it. Uh, it also identified the need for, um, the, for looking into a, another snow dump site in the future. I know they're fairly expensive to engineer and we have to engineer it. Uh, one of the, uh, points that engineering always tells us about is that as soon as you pick up the snow and put it into a truck, it, it's deemed a hazardous material, so it has to be, uh, dropped off at a designated site that's properly engineered. Let's see here, uh, replacement of capital equipment was another recommendation in the, in the report, and it talked about the new snow blower that they're gonna need. It, it will replace a smaller, older unit, so it'll be able to put more snow into the trucks and haul that away quicker. Uh, contractors will attend an orientation sent, session earlier in the session, in the season, instead of waiting until we need them, uh, we're gonna try to line them up in advance and then take them through the orientation so that when we need to call on them throughout the year, they don't have to start from the, uh, from the ground up. Uh, we're also going to maintain the parking lots that the city crews clear right now, but we are gonna review the number of parking lots and ensure that we're using, uh, that service efficiently. The use of driveway clearing was one main topic of discussion. Uh, administration felt that they spend a lot of time clearing the openings in driveways from the windrows, and suggested that they could speed things up if they left the windrows there, but it, the committee ultimately decided that it was best to leave that out of policy 606. Uh, it's, there's, the service level that residents are used to is having their driveways cleared, so that's gonna continue to happen. And finally, uh, we, we discussed, uh, increased communications during the entire snow removal season. I think people get discouraged when they don't know where the snow removal crews are, so we're gonna find better ways to, to communicate with the public and let them know when that, uh, when the, the no parking, uh, winter ban is in effect, because those get declared on and off, uh, depending on whether or not the, the snow removal crews need to go through your neighborhood.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I just, uh, I will certainly be supporting, uh, this motion, and I just wanted to, uh, commend Frank and his staff for, for the work they put into developing, uh, this plan. I think, um, they work together, they listen to one another, uh, and, uh, they came up with something I think that, uh, was very useful. Uh, didn't quite buy it all, but I think that's part of the political process, uh, so, uh, but, uh, I'm pleased with, uh, the plan we have now, and I think that we're showing that we're, uh, we are, uh, respecting the feedback we heard, and we're trying to improve. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I move that council approve, oh, sorry, I move the council award tender T-40-546-11, Ice Control Material, which is sand, to Wapiti Gravel Suppliers Limited for the amount of $165,300 excluding GST. I believe that's, uh, this was a similar amount to what we paid in the previous year with a slight increase.
Okay, thanks for, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor, uh, discussion or debate? Counselor Rice?
My question, uh, through the worship to Mr. Descavage, um, Erdry, it, it was using a, a system of wetting down the material for intersection control, and it seems to, uh, through the municipal excellence, uh, uh, reporting system, seems to have a rather excellent outcome. I would, and I thought we were looking at that as well.
Mr. Descavage?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, yes, we are, that was indicated in the snow, uh, report that went regarding the snow policies, we will be looking at pre-wetting our material.
Now, they have a special machine, is that something that we would look at during our capital budget process?
Uh, Mayor Given, we can look at adapt, putting an adapter on our, uh, snow plows and, uh, sanders, and it'd be on the sander portion, and it basically just emits a spray that attaches to the chips and that, so they'll stick to the, uh, ice surfaces better.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on tender, on the tender for sand? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong?
Yes, I move the council award tender T-41-546-11, Bulk Highway Salt to NSC Minerals Inc. for the amount of $250,215 excluding GST, and, uh, just for information, this was the lower of two tenders that we've received.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you very much. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
No, thank you, but I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Counselor Wong on that set of Public Works Committee minutes? Seeing none, then we'll move on to General Government Services Committee meeting, and I believe Counselor Gustafson, you handled that one for us.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move the council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held September 21st, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move the council approve the award of RFP 25-215-10 for the Outdoor Wireless Wi-Fi Network to Binary Solutions LTD, operating as binary, binary broadband, as a solution provided for the Outdoor Wi-Fi Wireless Infrastructure Project in the amount of $259,821.90 excluding GST for equipment, services, training and extended warranty.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing one, Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Just recently, I heard some things about the Wi-Fi, Stratocona County voted it down around the schools, and there was an area in Ontario, so, um, what's all behind this? And, uh, what are they nervous about? Like, there's some communities that voted down not to do this.
Um, so is that, uh, I wonder if our Director of Corporate Services could speak to the Wi-Fi issue? Mr. Anderson?
Sure, Mayor Given. The standards for Wi-Fi are set by Industry Canada, and we're well within those guidelines, so we see no health concerns with it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. One more, thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, I think we have a, another interesting piece of business. Oh, Counselor Radburn, you gonna take that one?
Yeah, at least the first. First part, thank you. Uh, I'd move council establish alternate Mondays at 6:30 PM as the date and time for regular meetings of council effective following the October 17th, 2011 organizational meeting. We have a series of three, uh, motions coming forth with respect to, uh, meeting schedules for, uh, for the next, uh, next year of our term. Um, the majority of committee supported this motion. Um, I know I supported it because I felt that, um, we needed a bal, if, as transparency and engagement are priorities of this council, and they are, I think it's very important that since we have standing committee meetings during the day, the, uh, regular council meeting should be in the evening. Uh, that provides, uh, opportunities either at council, standing committee meetings or at council, uh, for people to attend. Some might not be able to get away in the afternoon, some might be able not get away in the evening. This way, there is both alternatives open for, uh, citizens who want to come to council. So this, this motion was not consistent with the recommendation from administration, but, um, as the motion unfolded at committee, this is the motion that is being brought forward to, uh, council. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So it's open for discussion and debate. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm, I'm reasonably, uh, on the fence with this. It, uh, you know, as Mayor Alderman Radburn said, we're trying to make it so that, you know, everybody can get to the, to the meetings when they want to come. So does this mean that historically, we usually have meetings prior to council meetings? Does this mean those meetings are gonna be a whole lot earlier? First of all, so we have time for them, and are we gonna continue to have those meetings as well?
Uh, well, I certainly, I think I could speak to that. Uh, council does from time to time have council committee the whole meetings prior to council, uh, or strategy sessions, and, uh, I think that's a practice we continue to do, and so they would probably start a extra half hour early accordingly. Does that answer your question, Counselor Gustafson?
Uh, yes, so if we haven't, but most, most of the time, I've noticed that we usually try to cram those in before the meetings, and I believe we don't have enough time to have those before the meetings, and I believe that should be earlier. So are we looking at having five o'clock or 4:30 or four o'clock start times to having these meetings then on Mondays?
Sure, so if those meetings aren't a part of our organizational, uh, schedule, we don't set those in advance for the entire year, not, at least not the majority of them. Um, and those are really a function of the agenda items that are on the list, so we may have an item that takes 15 minutes, and so we'll schedule it for a 15-minute meeting, and we may have a, a couple of agenda items that could, administration may think that they might take an hour. Uh, sometimes council members choose to talk a lot, um, and so it's really a function of, uh, time management at the meeting and the agenda prep, but I think that's something that we can work on. It's fair feedback. Anything further, Counselor Gustafson?
Uh, no, that's good, thanks.
Counselor Rice?
Yes, I'm, I'm somewhat puzzled by the recommendation to up the start time by a half an hour. Uh, that almost seems like tinkering. Uh, you're, you're not changing it substantially enough that it has any substantive, uh, effect, uh, the change, so I, I guess I, I would be interested in the rationale to, to just push the start time back a half hour.
Sure, so would somebody that was at the committee meeting like to speak to that? Counselor Radburn?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, good, good question, Counselor Rice. I, I think we thought that, um, that we'd move it up so that people who wanted to come, particularly as delegations, which is the time they have to speak, the delegation's com, uh, portion will be over sooner, and so they have time, uh, to do other things in the evening, whether it be family or other meetings or other commitments. We just thought by moving it up a bit, that takes the delegation component earlier and allows them to, uh, I guess, provide their input, uh, and yet not have to, uh, uh, wait too long into the, uh, evening before they, uh, continue with their normal lives.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. I see Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. As Counselor Rice said, tinkering with a half an hour, I find it the supper time with young families, and if there's an issue, you're, you're kinda crunching it to get here on time, and I had no problem at seven o'clock, so why the half hour? I still don't get it, so, anyway. I know they were planning early afternoon, but I, I think supper time, it could fix a bit.
Okay. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. As, uh, Counselor Rice has said, that, that does look like tinkering. I mean, daylight savings time was an hour. Um, that makes sense. Um, seven o'clock, uh, I'm, I'm quite happy at seven o'clock. People get out of, off work at six o'clock by the time they get home and get here. Usually, the first part of our agenda is with anybody with any concerns, and they could be out of here by 7:20 or 7:30, so I feel that gives them enough time, but just changing to 6:30, I don't think people will get enough time to get home and get their families either fed or in order and then go back. That's my opinion.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that motion carries. Okay, moving on from there, Counselor Gustafson, are you going to handle the next item of business?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council establish, I'll move that council establish that effective following the October 17th, 2011 organizational meeting. Number one, the Public Works Committee and Community Development Committee meetings will be held alternate Tuesdays at 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM respectively. Number two, Protective Services Committee and General Government Committee Services meeting will be held alternate Tuesdays at 10:00 and 2:00 respectively. And Environment Committee meetings will be held monthly on Mondays at 2:00 PM.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'd note that essentially, this moves the council committee schedule into Mondays and Tuesdays rather than the one meeting that we currently have in our schedule that's on a Wednesday. So puts all those committee meetings on a consistent basis at the front of the week. No further discussion or debate around the table from the looks of it, so we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. One further, I think, from there. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council incorporate a two-week summer break into the council and standing committee meeting schedule.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate? Counselor Wong?
I guess this is one I really don't understand because council members tend to take breaks at different times throughout the summer, and so do staff. So it really doesn't matter, you know, when, you know, I don't even see the purpose behind having a summer break. Summer seems to be fairly busy. It has for the past few years. And if it isn't, we cancel one meeting here and one meeting there, and it still seems to work. I really don't know the rationale behind this one.
Others in the queue maybe to speak to that? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think the thinking here, Counselor Wong, was that we always have the option of having special meetings if we need it. We thought that having all standing committee and council meetings for a two-week break would give the opportunity, the opportunity for counselors to have their holidays then and not miss meetings. Also, I would suggest that staff are away more in the summer. And therefore, they're not, we don't have the resources to provide reports, et cetera, during the summer to committee. So it allows both staff and council to have a bit of a break from the normal, I won't say grind, the regular schedule of committee meetings. So that's similar like we do at Christmas. Usually, Christmas is about two weeks' break as well. So it provides two breaks over the course of the year.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Okay, was there anything further from that set of General Government Services Committee meeting minutes? Counselor Gustafson?
No, thank you, Mayor Given. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Counselor Gustafson? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the Combative Sports Commission. Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Combative Sports Commission meeting held September 21st, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Was there any business arising, Counselor Wong, or anything you wanted to highlight?
This was just a working session meeting in preparation for the October 15th event at the Crystal Center. And we're having another one of these sessions this Wednesday at noon. Council members are definitely invited to attend these meetings if they care to sit in and have some input. But really, they are just working sessions, and we're just taking care of all the requirements that need to be met for that next event.
Okay, thanks very much. See Counselor Radburn in the queue. Was it on this set of minutes? Sure, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question. Tell me what the consultant does. What role does the consultant have with an event?
Sure.
Counselor Wong?
We have, we've hired a consultant to help step us through the process of holding an event. The role of the commission is really regulatory more than anything. So the consultant is there to help us, or to guide us in terms of what to look for. There are, for example, inspectors that are supposed to be watching hand wrappings. So we have a consultant in the dressing room to point out to the inspectors exactly what they should be looking for. The consultant also sits ringside to help direct all the activities within that technical zone. And so far, we have been using the consultant to help fill out our decision cards because there are some technical things that some of us aren't really in the know of. Like for myself, I'm not familiar with all the moves. So when, if a contestant were to, or if a bout were to end by a chokehold, or an arm bar, or something like that, there is a technical term that they need to put on that card and hand it into, hand it into the announcer. So he's just there to make sure that everything goes smoothly, and we are getting educated on that. Our commission decided that we probably are going to need a consultant for the first two or three events, and then we wouldn't need one anymore.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. So I believe we voted on that set of minutes? No? Okay. Okay, then I'll, if there were no other questions on the set of minutes, then I'll call for the vote to adopt them. Thank you. And that motion carries. We'll move on to council committee of the whole from September 26th. Would somebody care to move that set of minutes? Counselor McLean?
Monroe. I'm sorry, I was ahead.
Sorry, Counselor McLean was the one on my list there.
Okay, recommend council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held September 26th, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm just looking at the title for number one. Council strategic objective: Create a fiscal sustainability model.
Okay, so just a comment.
Changed? Thank you.
Thanks very much. Good catch on that one, Counselor Radburn. That's why we ask. That's why we ask. And so there was just a heading change, which has already been caught by administration. Any further notes on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that brings us, I believe, to 9.6. Counselor Monroe. Environment Committee from September 26th.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting held September 26th, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. I believe I'm looking for one more. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Monroe, was there anything that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Sure, Mayor Given. Maybe I'll just give the rest of council a brief update about what's been, what happened at the meeting. We had a concern from one of our public members on the committee about the spread of nauseous weeds. And we've, have administration looking into perhaps a policy to make sure that we're using our best practices to assist in, I guess, not assist in spreading the weeds, but to stop the assistance of spreading nauseous weeds throughout the city. And then the other item that we have administration looking at is looking into the possibility of developing a draft climate change adaptation policy. And more news to come on that as it develops.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any questions for Counselor Monroe? Seeing none, then we move on to our additional agenda item, 9.7.1 Ready-Set Dance Lease Agreement. Would somebody care to make a motion on that item? Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council approve a five-year lease with a five-year option to renew at fair market value for Ready-Set Dance.
Thank you very much, Counselor Crokin. So this is a lease at the multiplex. Any discussion or debate on the motion?
I would speak to that. It's, it's ongoing to have our beautiful multiplex full. We have one or two more spots to rent out. This was a very good mix of what we do have in there already. And they do have a business downtown, so it'll be a supplement to both, to have two locations. So really excited to have them on board. Although they don't have any four fours for me, they only have two twos, so.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Discussion or debate on the motion? Obviously, none on the quip, thank you. Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and we welcome another partner to the multiplex, and Ready-Set Dance. So that finishes our agenda items, our committee business, and we have no items of correspondence. I believe delegation business was just two updates for council, and we dealt with those. We had no notices of motion, so council member reports, and Counselor McLean, I believe you had Community Futures? Counselor McLean? Okay, okay, okay. So I've been overruled. So look for a motion to receive the delegations for information. Counselor Rice?
Okay, she who must be obeyed has spoken. Therefore, I move that we receive the information from the United Way and from Mr. Jarve Wildrose Candidate in this constituency for information.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice.
And Joe Johnson, sorry.
Thank you. So we'll call for the votes. Thank you. That motion carries. And so we'll move on to council member reports, and Counselor McLean for Community Futures.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm having a report on Community Futures, celebrating its 25 years. In the community, they're a community-driven organization, strives to be strong leaders in the community of economic development, which was originally called Samita, but changed its name in 2007 to Community Futures Grand Prairie Region. Purpose of Community Futures program in Western Canada support community economic development, diversify the economy, and maintain and create new employment. As well, Community Futures involved in many events. One in particular started in 2007, Northern Alberta Youth Entrepreneurship Camp. A week-long camp for 13 to 15 years old to learn about teamwork, leadership, and business. Community Futures assisted over 3,900 entrepreneurs of all kinds of service. Learning to start a business, how to write a business plan, how to market research, set up a business book, also to obtain financing. They assist more than 25 businesses per year. And since 2005, the Community Futures Grand Prairie Region has approved 130 loans for a total of $9 million, leveraging on $27.9 million, while creating or maintaining 370 jobs. And as a small businessman myself, they're very big in the community. I didn't really know much until I became a counselor, but they affect a lot of our small businesses in town. And I wish them another 25 years.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Radburn, I believe you had a couple of updates for us from different committees.
Thank you, Mayor Given. A couple of updates. First of all, from the Grand Prairie Airport Commission. We had a meeting of the commission on September 26th. Agenda included an information sharing session with the Chamber of Commerce Executive to look at, I guess, areas of mutual interest and advocacy. We had an update on financials, quarterly financials. Received a report that passenger traffic is up seven to eight percent year-to-date from last year. And actually is one or two percent over our busiest year, which is, I think, 2006 or something. So airport is busy, and I think that is an indicator of our economy in our area. Also, I would just, a quick update with respect to the Grand Spirit Foundation meeting of also September 23rd, I guess. We received, I think I had mentioned last time, that our general manager, Brian Hillby, is retiring, resigning retiring. We did receive 30 applications for the position. And over the last week, I've been on the committee to look at the replacement and the selection of a replacement, and that just came to closure today. And so I'll be able to give you an update next meeting with respect to who will be in that position. Also, we're doing a legal review of bylaws, just as a, kind of a standard course of action. We are contemplating one change to expand the management committee. There's the board that meets a couple of times a year. Management committee meets every four to six weeks. So we're looking at increasing that by one. And we're just finalizing the discussions with respect to Grand Spirit Foundation and Hite Pioneer Home Board coming to an agreement to facilitate their participation in the Grand Spirit and to include that lodge in municipal requisition for the area. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn, for those two updates. And Counselor Wong, I believe you had Peace Watershed Planning and Advisory Council Initiators Group?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. The group is gearing up for the W-PAC Summit in Slave Lake. That's the Watershed Planning and Advisory Council Summit, which is going to bring together all 11 W-PACs from across the province. It's going to be held from October 12th to October 14th at the Saw Ridge Hotel in Slave Lake. We have identified five projects that we need to complete this year. First one is a directory of water organizations and information sources. Second one is state of drinking water in the Peace Watershed. Third one is current and future water supply in the Peace Watershed. The fourth is aquatic wildlife health in the Peace Watershed. And finally, that will complete our state of the waters, will be able to complete our state of the watershed report. So we have consultants assigned to complete the first three projects that we're looking to, and we're looking to fund the last two. We've received provincial funding that covers almost all of the first three, plus, I believe, I can't make the announcement yet, but one of our industry members has talked to their company, and they were generous enough to make a sizable cash donation to allow us to fund one of the other reports. And finally, yeah, I guess all the projects are underway, and we're starting to get established as an organization. We have our communications committees, our committee has developed a website for us, as well as a communications plan. Our technical committee is looking after these reports. And then we have our finance committee, which is looking at how we're going to get sustainable funding for the next five years, which is approximately how long they feel it's going to take to complete all the reports.
Counselor Wong, has there been any work done on a better name for that organization?
Yes, the name that our group has gone with is the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance.
That sounds a lot better. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong.
You're welcome.
And if there were no other council member reports from community agencies, boards, and committees, then we'll start with council roundtable, and we'll start with Counselor Rice today.
I attended the dinner portion following the ISL golf tournament, kind of tag teamed with Counselor Crokin, which is pretty scary. And of course, council's relationship with ISL dates back many, many years. I also attended the AUMA convention that saw Counselor Linda Sloan of Edmonton elected as the new AUMA president, and myself acclaimed as the vice president of mid-sized cities. It was excellent. It's fascinating to sit in that room and see Alberta municipalities, small villages, towns, mid-sized cities in Edmonton and Calgary all have the same concerns. And certainly, that was proven again and again in terms of the priorities during the resolution session. That's it for me.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor Monroe?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Last couple of weeks here, I've attended the Canadian Urban Transit Association lunch, and that was where they gave their vision for 2040 and how the transit association and transit across Canada will look. I attended the Rural Libraries Conference kickoff breakfast with a few of the other counselors and the mayor himself. It looks like they were going to have a fun time at that library. Went to the Joint City-County Meeting. Went briefly to the Regional Sustainability Meeting, hosted by our friends in Beaver Lodge. And that's, it's, it is the entire region, and they do take turns hosting the regional sustainability. Attended the AUMA conference and found it quite informative this year. A lot of information was brought back, and I just wanted to, once again, congratulate Counselor Rice on a job well done. She did a fantastic job. well done. She did a fantastic job at, at emceeing the convention and organizing it. And then this weekend, I attended the Nighthawk Comedy Night fundraiser, where there was a few comedians, and it looks like they raised a lot of money for the Nighthawk Ski-Help.
Fantastic. Thanks very much, Counsel Monroe. Counselor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I saw Helen slide that little piece of paper over to you, Counsel Monroe. I also attended the Canadian Urban Transit Association meeting, the Centre Two Thousand. It was really great to see people from Montreal and across this great province of ours working together on green transportation and going together for funding from the federal government. I attended also the Joint City-County Meeting, and it was very interesting. We did, Stuart Wright did a very, very good presentation on annexation and the open houses that have been held to dispel any concern that these things were just going to be rammed down their throat. So I was really pleased to see that. And they were too, actually. On the twenty-third, I also attended with Counsel Rice, the ISL Open. And then, of course, I attended also the AUMA convention. The theme this year was the future is local. And, boy, that was sure taken up by the election this past weekend. One of the many sessions that I did attend, one was on, particularly interesting to me, was Andy RCP's remediation of grow-up properties, a growing concern for municipalities around the province. And I did get some very good material for our crime prevention and safety team. And also had breakfast meeting with the Enbridge Consortium on the pipeline to Kitimat and on the jobs and of the thousands and thousands of man-hours that it's going to provide across the country, and mainly Alberta will be benefiting from that pipeline to, basically to China, but also to Taipei and Japan. And again, I will echo congratulations to Helen as, as communications, or the convention chair. She did lose her spot a few times, but knowing that I know her, she just covered it up beautifully. So again, congrats. That's all, Mayor.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Counselor Gustafson.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I attended the Joint City-County Meeting along with the rest of council, and I was, I was moving for the last couple of weeks, so I haven't been able to attend them as much as I would usually like to. However, I was able to find some time to get down to the AUMA convention and speak with a number of ministers, and I got to load the AUMA app on my, on my Apple iPhone. Particularly proud and honored to be working with Helen Rice, because she really set the stage for, and tough act to follow for any other emcee, as you, as you gather around talking to people, and they say, oh, you're from Grand Prairie. Oh, you know Helen. And you've sure set a mark in the Canadian provincial politics here in Alberta, and we're sure proud of you. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. September twentieth, Economic Development Advisory Committee. September twenty-first, Canadian Urban Transit Association media event and reception. Peace Library Systems twenty-fifth anniversary celebration, and the Peace Library System Open House. September twenty-second, Community Futures twenty-fifth year of success. Rural Libraries Conference opening, City-County Information Meeting. And I had the opportunity to meet with, as a follow-up meeting, with James Manor residents to share with them the plan that was adopted by, at Protective Services Committee meeting with respect to how we're addressing issues around the community village, as James Manor is a neighbor. September twenty-fourth, Home Builders Family Tree Planting Day. So on a Saturday, I think Greg and Bell and I, and maybe others, helped, and we walked down the Musquessee Trail, and I think Greg and I did seventy-five seedlings. So it was a great event, and was pleased to participate. September twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, I was involved in the Grand Spirit Foundation General Manager interviews. Twenty-eighth to thirtieth, I attended the convention and would echo my colleagues' comments with respect to the work that Counselor Rice does for AUMA, and particularly in sharing the annual conference and meetings. And finally, we finished off the Grand Spirit Foundation interviews today. So that covers the two-week period. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Counselor Otul.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On September twentieth, I also attended the Canadian Urban Transit Association Luncheon Media Event. Grand Prairie Transit's twenty-five years in existence, and they discussed the Transit Vision two thousand and forty. On the twenty-second, I attended also the breakfast meeting and with Community Futures, with a number of colleagues in line here. I also attended the Rural Libraries Conference, and it was a very exciting conference. People from libraries from all over the province. Later on that day, I attended the Joint Council, City Council Meeting at the Tech Center in Evergreen Park. And once again, I'd like to comment on how professional our staff was in making the presentation on the annexation and answering all questions without any hesitation. On the twenty-sixth, oh, on the twenty-third, Lori Harrison, I attended her farewell party. Lori is the library director at the library here at City of Grand Prairie, and she's retiring here at the end of October. She plans on moving to a lake lot in Saskatchewan and also driving around in her nineteen-fifties reconditioned Airstream trailer. So good for her. She's done a lot of good work over there. On the Monday, I went to the Airport Commission and then jumped on a plane to go to Calgary to go to the AUMA meeting. While there, I went to an elected official education program, and that program that I chose was the Effective Planning and Strategy. Presenter, facilitator, was Gordon McIntosh, a very good presenter. I attended a number of other workshops there, Safe and Healthy Communities, Building Consensus Inside Councils, and Assessing Your Current and Infrastructure and Plans for the Future. And I also met with a number of ministers, including Ron Liebert, Len Weber, Luke Olet, and Vern Olson. Also met with, one-on-one with the Enbridge Northern Gateway Pipeline's President, John Karathas, and the Senior Manager, Michelle Perret, and discussed some of the program where City of Grand Prairie was going to fall into that. And they assured us that there would be a lot of spin-off for the Grand Prairie area. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Otul. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. On September twenty-second, I attended Community Futures twenty-five years of effective celebration, as well the City and County Meeting in the Tech Center, and as well that day, a tour of our beautiful new facility coming with, I believe, a lot of the county reps were there. And the last time I was there, it was all concrete, and this time, there was a wow factor. And I heard a lot of people talking about splash when I was on vacation, so I was very glad to be a part of that tour. As well, I attended, from September twenty-sixth to thirtieth, was in Calgary for the AUMA Convention. A couple of things I'd speak on. I went to the infrastructure and energy, understanding the impact of energy. Some things I wasn't quite sure on, and CAP put it on, Canadian Association Petroleum Producers. We're number three in the world in crude reserves, number three in natural gas reserves, and number six in oil production. We supply twenty-seven percent of global energy needs. And another thing I got big from there was the oil sands is, you always see about the tailing ponds, but eighty percent is drilling, and twenty percent of the mining reserves only takes up three percent of the landmass. So I think that's important to note. As well, I attended the Enbridge Breakfast and for Enbridge Northern Gateway Pipeline, and the President, John, was there speaking. They're fifty-five years in service. They're the longest and most advanced liquid pipeline system in the world. It's a thirty-six inch line going to Kitimat, five hundred and twenty-five thousand barrels a day of petroleum, if it does go through. And it'd be no discount like the pipelines going to the States. It'd be full market value. Over four thousand jobs will be constructed during the pipelines, around a hundred and fifty million per hour area during construction. And it gives us another way of selling to our product to the world, not just the U.S., but at market value. I'm a supporter of this, big time, and I hope it goes through. And another thing, I think, last time AUMA in Edmonton, I was new. I didn't speak to a lot of ministers, but one, I did speak to the Minister of Energy and threw questions at Ron Liebert. And one of them was, I said, I want, the North should be in more in discussions. So I'm looking forward to the North being heard more, since we're producers of Alberta's wealth. And I want to thank Helen Rice, because she did stand on her head at this convention of chairing it. As well, she was very, very funny. She made one comment. We were in the telecenter, and she brought communications. We had the things to vote on, and we couldn't vote on them, because it didn't work, the clickpad. And she said, it's funny that the name is telecenter, and it's not working for technology. Thank you, Helen.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Counselor Wong.
Thank you, Mayor Given. On Wednesday, September twenty-first, I brought greetings on behalf of the city to the Circle of Aboriginal Students welcoming ceremony at the GPRC. On the twenty-second, I attended the Community Futures twenty-five years of success. On the twenty-fourth, I brought greetings to the AIDS Walk in support of HIV North at Musquesee Park. Also, on the twenty-fourth, I brought greetings to the Alberta Sport Development Awards banquet at the Tech Center. I just wanted to give my congratulations to all the nominees and all the award winners as well. Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, I met with the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society and the County Administration to discuss the upcoming multi-use plan. On Thursday, September twenty-ninth, I brought greetings to the Oasis Centre downtown and was able to cut the ribbon on behalf of the mayor and council. Also, on the twenty-ninth, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Mixer at the Sandman Inn. On Friday, September thirtieth, I attended the Ambulance Chasers Run in support of the Regional EMS Foundation. And finally, on Saturday, October first, I did go out to the Catholic School Board Office to place my vote for the next premier of Alberta. I just wanted to congratulate Alison Redford on her win. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. I think we made it all the way around the table, so that'd be my turn. So on Tuesday, the twentieth, I attended at a city event. It was a panel discussion for the city's Leadership Institute. And the Leadership Institute is a program we put on for managers, manager-level employees of city departments, and to enhance their skills and training. And so I took part in that discussion with some other city staff. Director of Community Services was there, Mayor Leon Hansen of Beaver Lodge was there, and Charlene Kushner was there. And so a couple of graduates of the Leadership Institute, a couple of folks from outside, myself being one of them, and we were talking about talents and skills. But I really want to commend the staff that organized the Leadership Institute. It's another way that we're ensuring that the City of Grand Prairie is a great place to work, and that our staff have great development, personal and professional development opportunities within the City of Grand Prairie. Later that day, I attended and brought greetings to the Canadian Urban Transit Association Meetings and the launch of their Vision two thousand and forty plan. Tuesday, the, sorry, Thursday, the twenty-second, I attended at the Rural Libraries Conference, as a number of other councillors mentioned, and just want to say congratulations to the Peace Library System on their twenty-fifth anniversary, which was also celebrated at that time. I was at the Joint City-County Council Meeting, which has been mentioned before. On Friday, the twenty-third, I had an opportunity to meet with Alan Dixon, who is a new vice president of Atco Gas for our region. It was sort of a hello introduction and get-to-know-you kind of meeting. One interesting note that came up from that was that Atco has recently purchased a gas company in Australia. So for people that are looking for cross-training opportunities and professional development, that might be a company that you want to look at. On the twenty-fourth, I attended with Counselor Radburn and City Manager Greg at the Home Builders Celebration of National Tree Planting Day, and that was mentioned previously. We planted approximately five hundred seedlings in the undergrowth at Musquesee Park as a part of the ongoing efforts to reforest the area and provide some, provide some new trees. And it was actually fun to walk through and see where the trees from last year had thrived and were growing. So that was fantastic to see. Later that day, I attended at the World Religions Conference. This was, and brought greetings. This was held at GPRC and was organized by local volunteers, who brought together a leader of the Muslim faith, an Aboriginal elder, and a Christian leader, to discuss one topic, which was natural disasters, nat, excuse me, natural disasters, natural phenomena or warning from God. And so it was, the reason that I highlighted it was fantastic to see that this kind of open discussion was well taken up by the community. They had to bring in more chairs. The room was full. But I think it really speaks to the strength and diversity of Grand Prairie as a community when we can have these types of conversations. So I certainly appreciated that. Later that evening, I attended at the, the OCFAGM, the French Association's AGM. Was pleased to note that they are actually Alberta's second-largest OCF. And so, just behind Edmonton, I believe. And so we have a larger French community, French association here in Grand Prairie than they do in anywhere else in the province, which I think is fantastic. I was there to take part in the AGM. Congratulations to their new chair, President Cedric LeBlanc. And I was also there to receive an award as a friend of the Francophone in Alberta. And I think that's really mostly on behalf of the City of Grand Prairie that I would accept that. But I was also pleased to note that a city employee, Chad Kronk, from Musquesee Park, was recognized with an award, and I think that's for all of their work at Musquesee Park and hosting the maple sugar festivals. So congratulations to Chad, and great to see City of Grand Prairie employees recognize like that, the work that they do. On the twenty-seventh to the thirtieth, I was also at the AUMA Convention. While we were there, the Midsize City Mayor's group had an opportunity to get together, and one of the, there were a number of items on the agenda. One with regards to some provincial changes to transit regulations that may have an impact on our city buses, and also a discussion around the future of policing in Alberta and policing costs, which are a common concern among all mid-sized cities. So those will be items that we'll be discussing in the future. On Saturday, the first, after we returned, I had a meeting with the Director of the South Peace Habitat for Humanity Society, and she had some information on some changes that are going to be coming, and wanted to know how it would be best to bring those to council. So we made some recommendations, and that'll be coming forward. And then this morning, I was across the street at the public library to do two things. First off, to proclaim Library Month in the City of Grand Prairie in recognition of Canadian Library Month nationally. Then also, to pay my seven dollars and fifty cents, the best value you can get, and renew my library card. So if you haven't done it, October's a great time, as we head into the cold winter season, to make sure that you go buy, renew your library card. And speaking of the cold winter season, for those that haven't been in, maybe into the corners of the library, if you're looking for that Chapters-type experience, you need to know that in our new public library, you can go and buy your Esquire's Coffee, take it over to the corner. Boy, the fireplace is in the library. Sit there and enjoy a good book. So was pleased to be able to make that proclamation, and pleased to encourage all community members to renew their library membership. If there's nothing else for council meeting, then we'll call it adjourned. Thank you.